That's not red.
I just lost my Irish card.
All right, we're going.
There you go.
You got other people here yet or not? There's Ben.
Okay, Mayor, we are live. We are live.
We're live, okay. Is everybody ready?
Yep.
All right, I will call to order Wilsonville City Council for a work session on March 16th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. And we are not going to have an executive session because of the complexities of the first hookup we've tried here electronically. So, Council, are there any questions on agenda or items on consent? I'm seeing people shake their heads.
No.
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 Okay. Why don't we move down, assuming that we've got staff ready to work with us on our work session items, starting with our Town Center implementation update?
Mayor, did I get that there's no council or concerns?
We're not concerned.
Well, we've all got concerns, but not for formal presentation tonight.
Okay.
So Ms. Rybold, Mr. Vance, are they with us?
They will be shortly. Mr. Stone is queuing up the presentation right now.
Very good.
Dan, could you go get Rybold?
She's not presenting.
She's not? Okay, so it's just Jordan, never mind. Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, my name is Jordan Vance, I'm the Economic Development Manager, and tonight I am giving an update on Town Center implementation. So as you can see from this chart, there are a number of activities identified in the 2019-21 City Council Work Plan being implemented by a working team of us, including planning, engineering, and economic development. So tonight's presentation will largely focus on the marketing plan component, which is more related to economic development. The marketing plan will help us translate the community's vision for Town Center to key stakeholder groups, including property owners, residents, businesses, and developers. And we think this will help generate enthusiasm among these audiences and help stimulate private investment in new projects. So key components of this will be a 3D Main Street visualization and fly-through, which we'll see an example of tonight; development opportunity site analysis for key sites in Town Center, including Fry's Electronics; work is currently underway to produce visual renderings and financial analysis on a few different development scenarios on the Fry's site; real estate opportunities in Town Center; an infrastructure finance plan, which will kick off later this year; and then any public assistance programs on a state, regional, local level, including things like opportunity zones, tax abatements, vertical housing development, et cetera. So our vision is that the current project website, which is wilsonvilltowncenter.com, would be modified, and this would become the primary platform for the marketing plan. So this would include messages for the general public, as well as turn into a one-stop-shop for some of these key economic development audiences, like I mentioned, property owners, businesses, developers. And our sense in talking with developers is that they prefer a digital option versus a paper handout or a packet. And we already have QR code cards that staff and council have been using to drive to this project website, so we can continue using those when we're networking. So with that, tonight I'm excited to share with you our first example of marketing for Town Center implementation. So this is a 3D rendering fly-through of the portion of the plan's proposed future Main Street district that will run on Park Place. This rendering shows the Park Place extension portion between Wilsonville Road and Courtside Drive, which is the extension portion, which is currently a drive aisle in the Safeway Shopping Center parking lot. This work was funded through the Clackamas County Main Street 3D Program and completed by DECA Architecture in Portland. And it shows aspirational visual imaging for three-to-four-story mixed-use buildings with vibrant ground-floor retail, along with illustrative streetscape elements such as outdoor seating, year-round covered areas, place making, et cetera. All of the elements represented were talked about in the master plan and have been pulled together through this fly-through to create an immersive experience, to show what the future Main Street might look and feel like. It's important to know that this is aspirational and impressionistic, but it's meant to show the possibilities, but it's not an exact plan. So don't get too focused on the details. This does meet our code and our zoning requirements, but it's just one scenario of many. So it's meant to show a vibrant place where people could shop, or relocate their businesses, or live. So with that, I will play you the fly-through. Yes?
Excuse me, Mayor Knapp, Council Linville has a question.
Yes, Chair recognizes Council Linville.
I cannot see any presentation. Is there a presentation currently on?
Yes, there is. Do we have tech people with us here to help out?
So what are you seeing? Do you see all the videos?
Council Linville, can you see anything?
I can see all of the participants, but when I just click on presentation, all I get is a black screen with a little white person on it.
So on the left-hand side of the iPad, do you see where it says, like, switch to gallery view or switch to presenter view?
Um, okay. Got it.
Okay.
Got it? Excellent, thank you. Please proceed.
All right, so just to orient the group, this fly-through starts right here, south of Wilsonville Road, and it flies through this drive aisle right here in the Safeway Parking Lot, which is the destination outlined in the Town Center Plan, to be the future Main Street district as part of the Parkway Extension. So it starts here, Wilsonville Road, and goes north. All right, can everyone see this video?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going right into, this is the future signalized intersection at Wilsonville Road and Parkway. You'll see our monument signs, and on the west side of the road is existing buildings that have been enhanced and given a little bit of a facelift, and on the east side of the street is brand-new mixed-use buildings. So you'll see a more active ground-floor use, you'll see more covered areas, all of which were outlined in the Town Center Plan. And you'll see more place-making elements with street murals and street art. And you may have missed it, but in the first shot of the fly-through, there's also a structured parking lot that was included on this street. So again, this is meant to show the possibilities, this is not an exact plan, but the plan would allow for mixed-use three-to-four-story buildings, and this is meant to show just a vibrant, exciting version of what our future Main Street could look like. This final shot here is, shows the intersection at Town Center Parks. You'll see, you'll see in the distance, some of the existing conditions with our parks and rec building in Town Center Park right here. This final shot. So with that, we can move into discussion, and the key questions I have for Council tonight are: Are you comfortable with the general direction we're going with the marketing plan component of Town Center implementation? Is wilsonvilltowncenter.com the right channel for this? And does the marketing plan include the right components? Is there anything that's missing?
Mayor Knapp, Council Leahan has a question.
Chair recognizes Council Leahan.
Yes, you said that this was a combination of three and four-story buildings, all I see are threes.
So on the, I think there is maybe one four-story building, but it's a combination of three and four, and half the buildings on the west side are existing buildings, so a lot of those are also one-story buildings.
Okay, so is there a reason that we want to, is that because we have a zone code that says we can't go above three or maybe four? We've already got three-story in there, in Town Center.
For the Main Street.
Why would we be, what?
The Main Street District caps density at four stories, so we envision higher density on the, along I-5. Here where Fry's is allows for five to six stories, but the Main Street District is up to three to four stories.
Okay, so a reason for that?
I think it was moderate density, the community felt more comfortable with that height level, and we need some level of density to support the ground-floor retail on the future Main Street.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not that excited about it, I'll just say that. It's not the direction I would go to build a bunch of squatty buildings in Town Center at this point in time. And I think part of it, part of our issue is, we haven't been up there. But you get a little bit of height, and all of a sudden, Wilsonville is a view location. And where better than close to I-5 and in Town Center? We're not blocking anyone's view. And the way it was done in the suburbs of Vancouver, BC, which I toured their buildings, was, I mean, this isn't, I guess I could wait until we're commenting, more discussing this, but they were distanced because they knew what they were selling was a view. And so you didn't want to cluster all your tall buildings together, they were apart from each other by, you know, several blocks, and then there would be a tall one, and then some shorter ones, and then a tall one. So that each of the tall ones had fabulous views. And I think Wilsonville, unlike our neighbors in Tewallerton or West Lynn, height gives us views that they can't ever attain. And, but, we just, we need to send a drone up and look around. If that's, I think it would be a huge missed opportunity if we don't really think about view creation, not just what it looks like from the street side, but what kind of views are up there in the air. Once you get above three or four stories, you can see for miles and miles and miles in all directions. So that's my comment about the building height. Now, my other question is, I noticed some of those roofs are green. Is that because we're going to plant lawn, or is there going to be, and they're going to be green roofs, so to speak? Or will there be recreation, outdoor recreation up on those roofs?
That was just an example of a green roof in one or two of those buildings.
But were they supposed to be also usable by people?
I think in this scenario, it was not usable by people, it was just a green roof.
Yeah, yeah. Because that's the other thing they did in the suburbs that I didn't remember the names of, outside of Vancouver, was they were recreational, they were very popular recreation areas for the building, up on the roof. The roof was fabulous. And then the other thing is making sure we have solar accommodations. Like, if we don't, I mean, one thing you notice when, on doing that fly-through, is all the potential for either, or the lost potential for view and outdoor recreation, and the potential for solar. And so we shouldn't be building a bunch of ugly flat roofs. You know, that's what they did in, you know, north of Bridgeport. You drive along on I-5, nothing but flat roofs with, nothing but ugly. And so, so we have to look at our buildings not just from the street view, but from that rooftop view. Who are these architects, anyway? Anyway, that's my main comment.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to comment? Councilor Acreval?
Yeah, I would just mention, I think we probably all received an email today, and staff didn't receive it, but I'll pass it along, but one of the questions in the email, which was from a community member, was, in the 3D visualization, can they add transit? And to be honest, I'm not exactly clear on what the request was, but if they just wanted an image of a bus, smart bus, in that visualization to show that we do have a very robust, strong, smart, you know, bus system here in Wilsonville, which will be an asset to Town Center in the future. Or if they're wondering, how does transit work with the street plans of Town Center? And the second question, I imagine that's going to evolve over time, as, you know, the needs change, and Smart's always assessing where people are wanting to go, and where the demands are, and they're very careful and strategic at how they plan their routes. So I guess I just wanted to pass some of those thoughts along, because, of course, Smart is a, it's a great asset for our city, so maybe they're just looking at ways to incorporate that into the marketing and the site in some way. And one of my own questions was, you talked about getting how this is kind of just switching over the current website that exists, and that those former QR codes would still point people to the website. But I wondered what thoughts are as far as generating traffic to this website and to the marketing materials. That's it.
That's a good question, and I think good comment on adding transit. We do have bike lanes in the rendering, but I think that's something maybe we could look at, is adding buses, or visual, what's that?
Pullouts and shelters.
Yeah. We haven't put together a full plan on how we're going to drive traffic to the website, but I think email marketing could be a part of that. Some of the outreach that I do with developers, networking, property owners, we'll continue to drive those folks to the website. So my thinking is that email marketing will probably play a big role in the traffic that we do generate from, to that website. It's a very targeted audience, so it's not going to be a significant amount of people in terms of numbers. I mean, it's a handful of developers that we've been engaging and speaking with, it's a handful of, you know, four or five property owners. So it's a very targeted list of folks that were engaging through this effort.
All right, other comments? Council Linville?
Lance, I'm wondering, in the flyover, if there was a vision for residential housing in that area, or are you saying that the residential area will be away from the center of the town, you know, this center area?
This fly-through shows a mix of both. It's mostly residential, but the code allows for both residential and office upper-floor use. In our initial financial feasibility studies, residential was the most financially feasible, so that's probably what we'll see more of in a district like the Main Street.
Yeah, then I would agree with Charlotte, that, or Council Leahan, that to make it very attractive, one or two, two stories, or even three stories would probably not be as attractive as would some of the higher views. I would agree with what she had to say. And I would encourage that we would have that residential in that area where people could live and shop, and let it not be often be separate. Thank you.
Anybody else? Council West?
I did my little digital hand, I don't know if it worked.
It worked.
Okay, oh, thank you. Okay. I, my thoughts, especially going through that 3D walkthrough, Council Leahan's comments really kind of rang true to me also. My initial thoughts when I saw that, remind me of the, like, less, like, I always, I pictured it like the Pearl District, but I feel like that 3D rendering kind of missed that mark. And Council Leahan has a really strong knowledge about, like, this area and what the potential is with her history here, and I think she's right, that there is view opportunity, I think that's really insightful. And it, for some reason, also had kind of, I don't know if this is not, if they're just rendering right, but it had a very kind of sterile, officey, kind of squatty, I love the term squatty, nailed it right on, vibe to it, to me. It didn't really seem like super appealing if you were going to draw in kind of a new demographic and more people in that type of area, that the housing are that kind of three-level tiered. I think as, I like the idea of the staggered different heights and having that opportunity. I did, in the reading today, and I was over here trying to figure out how to, like, find my notes that I typed on through on our iPad here, but I was just wondering if you could clarify under the funding portion of it. Let me see here, I'll see if I can remember what I typed in here, but I can't seem to find it. It says 3D visualizations were found, were funded through the Clackamas County Main Street 3D Program, and that this is coming out of a total budget out of our capital improvement for $150,000. And so, and just clarification, is part of that capital improvement budget was funds received from Clackamas County, is this like a grant? Could you explain to me a little bit, the budget or the impact? I was just, wasn't super clear to me how that worked.
Sure, I believe that budget is in relation to the I-5 bike ped bridge component. All of this work was funded through a grant, so Clackamas County has a Main Street grant program, where they fund heritage historic Main Streets throughout the county to do renderings on revitalization enhancement efforts. So our project was a little unique in the sense that we, we're the first project they've seen where we're actually transforming a surface parking lot, where there doesn't, there's no Main Street that exists, and we're turning it into a vibrant.
I'm losing you. I didn't hear what you last said.
Engineering manager, and just to clarify, the Town Center budget is that $150,000 funds of variety of work that's going on, including the TSP update, the streetscape work that's going on, correct? And then, and then, yes, that grant fund is part of that budget. So the I-5 pedestrian bridge project is a separate project, just to clarify.
Thank you for clarifying. Did you all catch that? Council West?
Council West, did that answer what?
I have one more question. When we were kind of traveling down the 3D lane there, and the cars and the buildings, is that the street front or the curb appeal, like, on the buildings that we're expecting to see, or could all of that change still? Is that like, kind of an idea-ish? Or like, how close to, like, reality is that kind of styling and look that we were looking at?
So that's, it's all rooted in what was outlined in the master plan. So all of the materials, pavers, on building, materials used for building facade, everything that's reflected in the rendering were, is based on what was talked about in the master plan. So a lot of aesthetic and visuals is what the community had communicated, that they found aesthetically pleasing. So that's really where we were taking our signals for the aesthetic look of this rendering. Just to clarify the height issue, so the height, the height is capped at three to four stories for the Main Street District, but is the recommendation to stagger the buildings, so there's, we can maximize the four-story height, and it's, there's a variation of one to four-story buildings.
Can we go higher, communication, is that an option?
We can't in the Main Street District, it's capped at four stories.
Why?
That's the code that was adopted, as part of the master plan. Doesn't mean that as a city council, you can't change it, but there's a pretty extensive process we would have to undergo.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. West, is that here?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Council Acreval, please.
Unmute, okay. I just wanted to add, though, see if staff can clarify, there are other areas closer to I-5, correct, that they looked at additional height?
Yes, that's right. So closer to I-5, you can go up to five stories, and six, I believe, if you include affordable housing.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. I'd like to add some comments to staff that's there listening to this. I think you've had a fairly concise and quite, quite much in agreement from Council that they would like to see something a little more robust in this area. The video tool, the simulated video tool is quite powerful, but what that has done is, we've jumped right over your question of whether it is a good way to present to prospective development, to the question of, do we want to present something a little more robust in terms of our aspirations in this area? And, you know, I have many of the same feelings that have been expressed going down the line through all of the council. The, it seemed not as exciting as I would hope. I did not see as many pedestrian spaces, or as many interspersed courtyards, or green spaces, or small public gathering spaces as I have envisioned through the entire development of the plan. The idea about using roof space as active recreational space could be easily suggested, you know, within that video. So one of the things that we were told early on is that the Town Center area is really huge, it's bigger than Portland's downtown. So I don't know that we want to skimp on having some of those other amenities interspersed with the living area, and I think we should try to portray that in what we are sending out to prospective people that might be interested in doing projects in this area. I also like the idea of doing a drone actual footage, which we could then put on the video, do a 360 from four stories up, or something like that, to show what you can see out across the valley, toward the cascades, down the River Valley, then toward the coast range, and get, you know, so you convey a sense of what those possibilities are. and get, you know, so you convey a sense of what those possibilities are. And so I think that your approach here, asking for whether we're in line with is an excellent approach, but we're wanting to perhaps push staff to have our consultants come up with a little more aspiration about what possible amenities could be brought to this area.
Mayor?
At least that's my interpretation, yes.
We're hearing you long clear. Is there a limit to the number of stories that you would like us to explore in terms of that video?
If I was making the choice, I would say at least six stories, but not every building the same, that you would have interspaced differences which would help then break up the blockiness or sameness as I think Mr. West mentioned, going down the street. It just seemed not very inspiring from that standpoint to me.
Okay. So I heard six stories. If council agrees with that, you can nod your head, but if you have a different opinion, I'd like to hear that too. Counselor Leahham does not have, okay.
Counselor West would like to speak?
Wait, my hand's up also.
Oh, I thought you were just nodding approval. We'll come back to you.
No, yeah.
Okay. We've got you on audio now, Counselor Leahham, so if you want to go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Back in the 90s, the city of Wilsonville sponsored a trip on a bus to Vancouver, B.C. for the Planning Commission and the City Council and a number of other planning staff. And we went to meet with various mayors in these suburbs of Vancouver, B.C. and tour these buildings. And it was just mind blowing. These were suburbs. These were not big cities. And most of the buildings that were tall were not downtown Portland 40-story buildings. They were in the eight to 10-story range. And there were like three in a suburb so that they, and spaced apart so that every side, every facet of every building had fabulous views. They weren't packed together like a concrete jungle. And I think until, and then we got to see the rooftop golf courses and things that were going on on the rooftops. But I think that's, that it might be time to do that again, that some of our decision makers, either DRB or Planning Commission, to, you know, kind of show them there are other options. And then, once you actually see it, you have a chance to say, I like this about it, but I don't like that about it. And instead of talking in all, in all theoretically how it might be. But yes, I think we need to be up there at the eight and nine. The other thing that is, that drives going up is talking to builders and what the building code issues are because things change at different levels in terms of requirements for, building code requirements for a building. Because above six stories, you don't have, you can't reach it with a fire engine, a ladder. So different things change, but almost always, every floor up is, except for the difference between six and seven, every floor up is cheaper because you already own the land and you already built the foundation. So it's cheaper to build and yet every floor up is more expensive to rent or, I mean, there's more return to rent or sell a condo that has these fabulous views and not just the pedestrian ones. So there are a lot of considerations that I don't think the city council is in a position right now to say six and no more or seven and no more or whatever. There's too much information we don't have right now about, about where the different breaks come. And you need to talk to builders, building officials, and I think go look at these products.
Was there any?
Whether, and maybe there are more of them around here now to see in the Pearl or wherever, but, but boy, the ones in those suburbs, because it was not trying to, they were not trying to create a downtown. It was definitely suburban otherwise. The others, the other buildings were mostly two and three story. And then you'd pop up these fabulous view structures. So anyway, there are different ways to go about it, but yeah, that's all.
Do you have any recollection of the names of those towns, Counselor Leahham?
I would have to get a map and look at.
Do you remember the year?
Or, I don't remember the year, but I don't know, was, I think it was, it was before Chris Namsu, but he might know nonetheless.
I'll follow up with Chris in the morning.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find it. Anything else, Counselor Leahham?
No, no, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor West, Chair recognizes Counselor West.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the exact same thought as you said, how many floors up? And I was like, I don't know how many, I don't know how many stories. Six may not be enough. What will work and what will be appealing and hit the goal, I think, is what's my answer. I wasn't, I would have no idea if it's six or if it's 10. And it might be, and it might be both. I don't, I don't know. I think that just being a little innovative and outside the box and we won't always have this opportunity to get it right. And if that means that we have to look at going high. And I'm very amused how drones came back up in our meeting. I remember we just had a council meeting where we were talking about drones, but I liked that idea too, using technology and getting the visual of it, I find appealing. And I think if we get it right, we inspire people to get on board with the vision. And that walkthrough that we just had wasn't as inspiring for the vision of all of the work that's already gone into town center. So I would say I have no idea how many floors to look at. I think we just need to look at going up.
Okay. Good.
Thank you. Counselor Leahham again?
Just one last thing. I do recall talking with the mayors up there in British Columbia, that once one suburb went tall on a couple of buildings, suddenly there are three other suburbs that want to do the same. You know, it's like the suburbs are stuck in this shortness, but once one of them goes up, then the others see that that's, and all of a sudden, the next town over wants one of theirs. And you know, so that's, that's what was happening around, outside of Vancouver. They're just thither and thither. Anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Other councilor comments? Counselor West, did you have something further?
Yeah, just one concern really quick as we talk about wanting to go up. I'm hoping that our mass transit options become a little bit more robust, especially being there by I-5. I think that's going to be a need. I don't know if that's a better, I don't know what that looks like. I know that's not what we're talking about totally, but it just hits me as like, they're going to get really dense there, which is inappropriate place in our city to be dense. But I, I, I'm so proud of Samar and I love Samar, but it needs, we need it to be more robust. It has to be more to provide proper access for people who get to work and their livelihoods and get into the city. Working at OHSU, it's still very challenging during work hours to, in a reasonable amount of time, just to get to the south waterfront. And there's all kinds of creative ways to make that happen, but I'm hoping that we can, I know we will, but I just, you know, trying to thought as we go up, we need to be really aware of how we're going to move people.
Okay, so Mayor?
Yes?
We have three other agenda items. I think we have enough information. We know what's missing. We'll regroup, have a staff, and then we'll come back at the next work session and talk about next steps.
That sounds good. Thank you very much. I believe that we might have the same group of people then to talk about the I-5 pedestrian bridge and Gateway Plaza piece of this overall vision.
You have Zach Weigl.
Mr. Weigl.
Project Engineering Manager.
My name is Zach Weigl, Capital Projects Engineering Manager, and I'm going to give you update tonight on the I-5 pedestrian bridge project. We just wrapped up a public engagement process through open house and online survey. And we're going to use that information to develop some conceptual designs for the plaza and the bridge and hopefully have that was ready for more public input in, at the August block party. So the information we're looking from you tonight is on the design principles and themes to prioritize for this project, help the project team develop those conceptual designs. And then what types of bridge to evaluate and what the bridge in the plaza, what amenities should be incorporated into those designs. So the first topic we're wanting your feedback on is the guiding principles of design. And like I said, these are really the themes to help the project team develop those conceptual designs. And what we started with were the town center goals as a starting point. And we included a copy of those goals in your packet of material, so I won't go through those. But also, I want to mention that we did send out the detailed information on the survey and open house to you on Friday. So you should have the detailed information on that. So with the guiding principles, we really looked at, we really asked for feedback on the vision, like we asked, what are three words that you would use to describe Wilsonville? And then also some feedback on what should be prioritized for design and then what is the, what should be the theme and identity of the bridge and the plaza. So some of the feedback that we got was around the vision was safe. A lot of the themes were around nature and being family friendly, representing the Willamette River and Boones Ferry. And then some of the design elements, again, were centered around nature and sustainable design. Also, making sure that whatever bridge and plaza is built supports future development of the town center and then making sure that we have art and incorporate places to stop and rest. So the project team developed kind of these draft design principles. We presented these to the Planning Commission last week. And some of their feedback that we're going to include in these, in these five design principles are to be mindful and consider the cost as we move through the design and develop these conceptual bridges and plazas. Focus on access to transit and citywide connectivity, not just focusing on linking the Emerald Chain, but community-wide connections. And making sure that the design buffer sound from I-5 and again, supporting town center We also asked for feedback on bridge types and which elements to include in the bridge and plaza. We looked at different bridge types and then also the experience of the user on the bridge with some of those features should look like. And then also amenities on the bridge and plaza. And this is kind of a summary of the feedback that we got. The bridge types are the arching simple, cantilever, and then the modern artistic. Some of the high-ranking bridge experiences, the structural and open, that kind of go along with that cable cantilever and arching simple bridge types. And then really focusing on, again, natural features, sustainable features, extensive tree canopy and those like things. So tonight, we're looking for your feedback on kind of those guiding principles that I mentioned and then what of these elements should be included as we move forward.
Over to you, Mayor.
So that is the questions that staff is asking about the guiding principles, about the bridge type and about the plaza design elements and amenities, is that correct?
Yeah. So the first question was around these guiding principles. Making sure we got that right. So the project team is going to use this information to help develop these conceptual designs. So it's kind of the guiding features.
Council, do you have any particular comments or focus that you would like to comment on the design principle draft? Anybody?
Can you see if there, okay.
I'm looking. I don't see anybody ready to talk.
Mayor Knapp?
Counselor Acravall?
Yeah, I think that these, these design principles look, I think that they're, they're good. I think that some of the feedback from the Planning Commission is also good in, you know, be mindful, considering costs. I think that how I interpret that is, I don't, personally, I don't know that I am, you know, dead set on a cable versus a modern versus, you know, a different type of design without knowing if one would be much more expensive than the other. So it's kind of hard to pick a specific shape without having some of those, those other variables known. But as far as what the overall goals are of, you know, having a safe crossing and a good connection, and I think the attention on that plaza and the landing point is very important. And I'm seeing that come up here with the Gateway Plaza and even talking about how to integrate sustainable features or well, the nature, bringing that and the Emerald Chain, I think those all point to the importance of that plaza and how that is designed. And of course, you want the bridge to flow into that experience. One thing that I was a little bit surprised in reviewing that, that packet that was sent to us that contained the feedback from the online survey and from the open house was the number of people that said that they were looking for a place, I'm scrolling through, trying to find it, but it was like a place to rest or benches along the bridge. And I definitely could understand that being an important element in the park. And of course, we want the bridge to be accessible to everyone, but I don't know that a lot of people would want to hang out on the bridge versus in that park being the landing point. So I was kind of surprised to see that higher on the list. But the other things that was coming back from the online survey and from the open house that was held, I think that really speaks to, you know, kind of how this project has been framed for some time now, as well as the, some of the goals for town center itself too. So of course, those need to work hand in hand. Yeah. Kind of my, my feedback and perspective.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mayor Knapp, Counselor?
Counselor Acravall. Or, excuse me, Counselor Linville, yeah. No, we don't recognize Counselor Linville.
Counselor West had a question, Mayor Knapp?
I was recognizing Counselor Linville.
Okay. So I think I'm unmuted now, right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So it's my understanding that the plaza is, is quite a distance from town center, is that correct? Is that correct?
So the plaza is in town center. It's kind of between the I-Care Place and Fry's parking lot, right next to the theater.
Kind of toward the northern end, right?
Yeah, kind of towards the north, northwest.
Okay. So I, I like, I like the, I like the idea of creating the connections and, but I, and I'm wondering if the, if the intention here in terms of the Gateway Plaza is as a destination itself, or if it is intended to be a, a stopping off place, but really an entrance to what is going on in other places. And I guess that would, that would make the comments that the planning commission and that others have made, and I've lost the presentation screen again, so I can't see I just think, I just think that, that if we're talking about the bridge and the plaza that, that, so the Supporting Safe Active and Inclusive Experiences, I'm just wondering if it's, if the bridge and the plaza are intended to be a destination or a vehicle to get to other recreational opportunities? And if so, would we spend so much time and effort on, on all of these pieces, like including technology and design and those kinds of things? So I guess I'm just, I'm a little, I'm just needing some clarification.
Sure. So what we heard through the town center planning process was that the plaza is really envisioned as kind of a, as, like you said, a, not as a destination itself, but more as a gateway into the town center. So really, and that really came out in the, the survey that we had, too. When you look through that, that data, it's really about places to stop and rest and having good design, but not really focusing on things that would draw people to that plaza, like the playground or some of the other features that were shown on that, on the survey.
And so, in the planning commission's input where they said buffer sound from the plaza, what, what did that mean?
Yeah, that's really making sure the plaza is designed to buffer sound from I-5 because it can be quite loud from the traffic.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. Yeah. I would agree with Counselor Akervall that, I don't even know if it's really healthy for us to encourage people to spend a lot of time on the bridge when you're over all of that automobile exhaust. I wouldn't see that as being as important as, as having it be a really navigable, you know, aesthetically pleasing, but navigable place to just get from one side of the freeway to the other. And, and not necessarily encourage people to spend a lot of time over all those vehicles.
Yeah, the planning commission had similar comments about making sure you get, you can get across and it be aesthetically pleasing, like you said, but not having viewpoints or wayfinding signage or, or places to sit along the bridge itself, but maybe at either end of, of the bridge.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Leahan, did you have a question still?
Going to comment as, as far as the, I attended the open house about it, and there were a lot of good, good comments. I, I agreed with generally the direction that the little dots were going in. One of the comments I heard several times and afterwards was a concern in terms of the design on top of the bridge, to whether there would be a need for windbreak or where the prevailing wind kind of thing is on, if it wasn't all covered. I mean, one of the things that they liked about the design that had sort of an arching thing coming up was maybe that would, if the weather was coming from that direction, then it would, it would protect walkers and bikers from both the wind and rain. And so I think that's a, a consideration, a concern of a number of people in the design. I mean, that was driving part of their comments on the design. And, and the other thing is, I think we need to think about how it looks from the freeway because it's our opportunity to do something that says Wilsonville, or says Town Center, or something, you know, for people driving by. It should be, it should be more than just a standard freeway overpass, just a rail. It should, you know, and we, and there are examples of that around Woodburn's, both in terms of the design and in terms of the lighting, makes a lot of difference and, and sets off your community. That was all.
Thank you. Counselor West.
Thank you. I agree it's really hard to make a decision about a design because I, this comment that rings most true to me is budget and cost effectiveness and being aware of the money being spent. And I think we all do a good job of that here on this council. I am, maybe you can explain to me, and maybe I need to look into this a little deeper and spend a little more attention to how this would work because I'm failing to see the gateway piece of this. We were just talking about the heart of the Main Street downtown town center area previously being over by Safeway. That's not close. The Boones Ferry landing side is really industrial and it's still really far from the closest residential area where people would be coming from mostly, and that's visible, quite a distance still. So the gateway piece of it is, it's kind of, it reminds me of kind of a hidden gateway a little bit, and an expensive one. And so, I'm afraid about, I'm a little concerned about usage of it. I do agree, if the bridge is built with, with Counselor Akervall and Counselor Linville regarding hanging out and resting over the freeway, I would say this, sometimes people who are walking or maybe if they are somewhat, have some disability or impairment, do need a place to be able to like catch their breath or rest, or they feel, if they're feeling unsteady, there needs to be maybe something. I wouldn't necessarily make it a hangout place, but a lot of people who do walk and are walking during the day are going to be the senior community or people of older population. And so they might need to take a break or want to take a break, catch their breath, get steady, and then keep going. So maybe not a hangout place, but a safety spot, stop, yeah, something to maybe kind of meet that in the middle. But I don't think people in that are going to want to hang out up there anyways because it's I-5. So I, I would, I would maybe give that perspective about who may be using it at times and may need to take a break, and that may be a healthy thing to do and a safety thing. And I don't know, maybe over time here, and maybe I'll talk to the city staff or maybe some of you guys offline, is like, I just, seeing it as a gateway, like I'm not visually there yet, and maybe I, there's a way for me to get there. I'm just telling you, like, I see barriers of it actually panning out as a gateway.
So lots of good comments. I think Counselor West's points about needing to have a practical place for people to rest might make sense. I would think you might be able to do that at each end and not have to have it be right in the middle of the freeway in order to fulfill that function. I, also, I'm thinking about stories I've heard in the past about kids at a mischievous age that get up on top of the freeway and all of a sudden, they want to start dropping things onto the cars. And we need to be cognizant of that kind of thing if we're doing a bridge design. I also see Counselor Leahan's point about this needs to say something about Wilsonville and the bare spare concrete overcrossing is not going to do that, even though it's the most cost-effective to build probably. So I'm looking for some kind of a, I guess, reasonable investment in making something special about the, the statement about Wilsonville's town center. Now, how do you do that? There's all kinds of ways to do it. I think that Woodburn's approach is effective. I would not want to just copy Woodburn. I think we need to think about that. And I think there's probably legitimate reason to talk about weather protection also. So how to bring all those elements together would be the, the question. And certainly, cost is an important factor. We aren't going to do this very many times, though, and I think it's going to be there for a long time. I'd like to see us invest in something that we'll be proud of in, in 10 years or 20 years after it's open for use. Not just that we, we did the lowest possible cost one, which probably would not have aesthetic features, so. No singular clear answer to the questions staff is asking, but perhaps staff can gather the range of concerns that have been expressed by council and be able to move forward.
Do you have what you need? Yeah. Just to clarify, we are proposing moving, we're going to develop three alternatives using those three different bridge types. So the arching simple, the cables, the cable cantilever, and the artistic modern. So if those three bridge types, I, I think those three bridge types would give you the, could be designed to meet the needs we've discussed tonight within a reasonable budget. So we, if you're good moving forward with those, we have what we need.
So we can incorporate the comments that we've heard into those three different options and present those options back to you.
Okay. The, the guiding principles, I think, are generally good, but I wish there was one that had a little more value placed on the aesthetic expression of Wilsonville's project being something that is special in some way, or out of, out of just the routine and the ordinary in some way. And I'm not sure I felt like that was stated in the guiding principles explicitly.
So we can add that, something unique about Wilsonville into the design, is what we're hearing you say.
That would be my preference. Counsel, is that...
I heard Counselor.
Makes sense to anybody?
Mayor Knapp, Counselor West.
Counselor West would like to speak. Chair recognizes Counselor West.
Thank you. I think one really great way, if you want to find a way to find that value, aesthetic appeal, one great way to do that, that can be really impactful is with your lighting. And having really smart, beautiful, beautiful lighting can make a major difference and still help it be also budget-friendly while trying to balance those two big concerns I feel like are all kind of weighing. And maybe it's not, you know, as arched or asazzy with all of that stuff, but when you use the lighting the right way, and I, and I like, Mayor, how you mentioned Woodburn's because that is a pretty simplistic bridge to have the metal kind of archways, but the lighting is fantastic. And I think if some, and, and you think of that bridge because of the lighting. I mean, the holiday seasons, they do it. I remember for Pride, they had it like lit up the right way. They've done it for Halloween, and, and it's just really beautiful. And there's ways to make lighting really impactful. And if it's a pedestrian bike bridge, it has to be really well-lit anyways. So making that less utilitarian and also like beautiful is a way to do that.
Good points. Thank you. All right. Given our timetable, we probably should move along to our next scheduled item of discussion if staff feels like they can run with what we've given them on this.
Yep, I think we've got good direction. Then we have Mr.
All right. Mr. Carlson on building permit fees here tonight, huh?
Yes. While we get this set up, I've been passed a note from the control room. Just want to make sure, because of the, kind of the unique setup that we've got, kind of be aware of any kind of shuffling of papers or anything. It's picking it up on the, on the mic, and it's causing a little bit of feedback for the television audience. So just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and members of City Council. My name is Dan Carlson. I serve as the city's building official. Here tonight, the work session to present to you now what will be a more abbreviated version of what I was originally going to present. We did spend about 50 minutes, you may recall, at the January 23 work session, going through and discussing this fee proposal to, to great extent. Got some great feedback from each of you, and so I appreciate that. Tonight, I want to just provide a brief refresher and answer a few questions, share some, maybe some outreach results. I know there was quite a bit of interest in what outreach might look like, and provide just an overview of the fee tables. So with that, we'll get going. So the elements that, the key points here are that building permit fees are intended to support Building Division services. We've not raised building permit fees in 14 years. We've not kept up with the cost to provide services. In the last two years, Building Division ended with expenditures exceeding the revenues. The Budget Commission recommended looking at the fund at the last, in last fiscal year. The proposed fee increase allows us to recover costs at the end of three years and is in keeping with the approximate average of our eight comparators. So the elements of a fee proposal you see on your screen here, we're proposing to keep the basic fees affordable. We've done this with a minimum fee of $40. You'll see that in the fee schedules. We're recovering costs. In other words, we don't want to nickel and dime folks, and we're simplifying where we can. We've shortened the list of fees and we've consolidated a long list of fees in several areas. We're keeping the revenue local. We've instituted a smaller adjustment to building permit fees at eight and a half percent, and a larger adjustment to plan review fees and other fees equal to or at 30 percent. This sends less money to the State Building Codes Division. We're also instituting a one-time catch-up adjustment, 30 percent this year, with a smaller cost of living adjustment in subsequent years. The COLAs, cost of living adjustments, would be tied to the Western Region CPUI Index, noted, as noted in the resolution. And as for outreach, we are planning to give contractors plenty of time to adjust, with an effective date being proposed at July 1st. So skipping right to the outreach, move this on here. Basically, for the outreach, we have, the packet includes a letter that we emailed to 90 interested parties, including the Home Builders Association. We received one response from the school district, and that was a favorable response, understanding the need for the fee increase, particularly after 14 years of not doing one. We held an open house. We also reached out directly on two occasions to the Home Builders Association's Roseanne Johnson. We posted the fees on the Division's website. We had coverage in the Wilsonville spokesman through an article. And the State Building Codes Division mailed a statewide notice, which is also shown in your packets. And in conclusion to that outreach, no one wants a And in conclusion to that outreach, no one wants a fee increase, uh but they get it, especially after 14 years and falling far behind our comparators. Uh, no one is registered opposition, and everybody that we spoke to uh supported our level of service and really supported the quality of service that we provide. So just to briefly walk you through these fee tables and then I'll open it up for questions. Uh, the first part of the fee table really lays out the valuation, uh clearly defining the valuation. Then we have a fee table for residential and a fee table for commercial. We have uh and also a list of other fees shown in purple. The fee tables were adjusted approximately eight and a half percent, uh in some alignment with Oregon administrative rules, such as the phase development fee. Um, I mentioned that also in my staff report. Other fees that were adjusted, approximately 30 percent. And again, the minimum fee you'll see here was lowered to $40. The mechanical ta- fee table, uh we shortened and consolidated the list of fee types. Uh, the commercial mechanical was based on evaluation per Oregon administrative rule. Other fees were adjusted approximately 30 percent. And again, we lowered, to be consistent with the building fees, we lowered the mechanical fees to $40. Plumbing fees, a similar tape, similar story, shortened and consolidated the list of fee types. We had to to modify some of the fees to align with Oregon administrative rule. Um, and medical gas, residential fire sprinklers and other fees were adjusted to approximately 30 percent, and the minimum fee was lowered to $40. Uh, that's a super shortened abbreviated version for you. Uh, this is our timeline, and with that, in light of the time, I will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, uh Mr. Carlson. Council, uh questions for staff? Anybody? Councillor Linville?
Comment, I I wanna thank Mr. Carlson for um that thorough report. It was really nice. I think at our last meeting, we were concerned about what might be the opinions of the um the building community, and so I thank you that um that you did some outreach and that um you reported back on on what their opinions were. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other comments? Other than noticing that our uh friend and neighbor to our north, Twollet, seems like they are uh in as much need of updating their fees as we. I don't know how long they'll it'll be till they recognize that. Um, I wanted to ask Mr. Carlson also and staff, how how much concern should we have or can we effectively deal with at this point in time? The statement that we should be caught up in three years, we have some economic forecasts saying that we're headed toward economic challenges at least as bad as the 08, 09, 10 timeframe. And if that were to happen, what would that do to our financial projections here?
Uh, that's a great question.
Well, that's that's there's different, that's a different subject. If you're talking about budgetary versus fees, the fees should be set to a level that is basically looking at cost recovery. Budgets, operating budgets, based on building activity are a different discussion altogether. That's not what we're here to talk about tonight. We're strictly focused on fees.
Uh, so the three-year recovery is a budgetary discussion then, in your view?
Well, I mean, the way Mr. Carlson has laid this out is he's trying to be cognizant of the fact that this is gonna have an impact on his his primary customers, which are builders and developers. So we're trying to do this in a way that recognizes that, but also, you know, in a reasonable time gets the city up to speed in terms of where the fees should be set. So it's a responsible approach to kind of phasing in fees as as we've done on other items like SDCs and rates.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, uh, other questions for staff, uh council? We had pretty good discussion a couple weeks back. Not seeing any other questions, sir. All right. And I'm afraid we will need a few minutes between meetings to get uh our technology all dialed in, so appreciate if you can be expeditious, sir.
Yes, I will. I got one page, so um you know, I've some extensive findings in the staff report. I'm not gonna go through all those. Um, to my knowledge, you know, those were advertised in the DJC two weeks ago, and I don't believe we've received any comments on them. Um, but here, I'm just highlighting the main advantages to using this approach for this kind of a project. The first one there is it allows us to, you know, select a design engineer and the construction contractor independently, so you can pick and not have to hire them as one team. And then.
Your your microphone is kinda cutting in and out on us, sir.
Okay, is that any better?
Let's try it.
Okay, I'll just try to talk a little closer here. So we would hire the design engineer and construction contractor independently, but we would bring the contractor in at about 30 percent through the design to get their input on how best to approach and sequence the construction so we don't disrupt water treatment plant operations, so we keep providing drinking water continuously to the city residents. Just having their input in that process really minimizes the risk of surprises during construction. And then it also can expedite the schedule, you know, allowing us to get these improvements done in as a timely manner as possible. And from what I've heard, we are pushing up against the capacity of the plant in terms of meeting peak summer demands. And it also, the process allows us to simply go out to bid if we can't come to agreement on the guaranteed maximum price with the construction contractor. Once the package is complete, we can always revert to the traditional uh design bid-build approach if necessary. And it's it's not a new uh contracting method. It's been used in Oregon, I believe, since the late 80s, so it's fairly established method that a lot of experienced engineers and contractors are familiar with. So with that, I'll open for questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, council, any questions uh on this proposed contracting method to do our expansion up to uh 20 million gallons a day, I think is what we're working on? Um, a long planned expansion capability that we built into the plant when it was originally done? Not really seeing any questions. Council is comfortable with uh staff continuing down this path and pursuing this alternative method of of uh getting our our proposals in?
Yes, this will be on the agenda for this.
This is on for public hearing tonight, so this was just a.
On for public hearing.
Yes.
All right, I'm seeing nods anyway, so uh we will deal with it then, but I think we've covered what we need to cover for work session on it.
All right, so you you all have 10 minutes to get acclimated to do whatever you need to do for 10 minutes, and we'll see you back in 10.
All right, anybody have any major issues with the technology approach we're doing here to continue the meeting tonight?
I will say for just putting this together in basically two days, we're doing pretty good. Do you have something, Beth? So Mayor, we're just gonna let you know that during the presentations, we're gonna mute you because the background noises are are pretty audible on our end. Is that okay?
If you wish, I it's totally silent here, but whatever.